All right, seven o'clock. We've got to speak and begin to go. Split it. We'd like to welcome you to the city meeting tonight. Vera Tate and I'm excited. You're Tim. We have twice as many students welcome here today as well. Oh, and ceremony. Let's remember the citizens.
Two. Just one issue. So.
Thank you. Our father grateful to stay that we could be here together. There are citizens of Harrisville. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve. We're ready for that. We have to talk about things on our agenda this night. And we can follow through and do the things that we've been asked. But also, well, upon previous assets. We're grateful for this experience. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. And we say this in the description.
Free. A is approval of meetings for May ninth. Like three is presented. It's council, I guess. So look at those changes needed almost. It's not going to have a motion.
The meetings remain. I'll start then. So.
Have a motion and a second favor.
Hi.
Hi.
You. She carries. I don't remember me. And this is, I'm kind of excited to do this. I'm presenting a new member of the planning commission. Jordan, would you come up to the podium? This is Jordan Reed. I'm going to have you introduce yourself and welcome.
I'm Jordan Reed. Some of you know me, some of you don't. Good for you that don't know me. Yeah. Been asked for years to do something with the city. I've said no a lot. Michelle Merrick Tate finally convinced me to do this. I'm a big believer in standing up for what's right. Standing up for those that maybe don't have a voice or don't dare to speak up for what they need to say. And hopefully I can do that to some extent and do it the right way. So. We've been, oh, I guess I should say I've been. We've been in Harrisville for, I don't know, 16 years. Long time. I spent here all my life almost. We've got four kids. We live just over around 1,400. And yeah.
Any questions, Richard? Thank you. Then I will need a motion to appoint Jordan Reed.
I'll just approve Jordan Reed as a new member of the planning commission.
I'll say.
Second on favor.
Hi.
Oh, that was not the position, right? See, that's good.
Yes.
Okay. Timing was a little bit there, sorry. See you here. For planning mission.
Young man's camp leaving. Okay, to the first one tomorrow next, the first one. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so I apologize for that. But. Other duties. So.
We give an exit.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right. Number four, Mrs. Cyrus. We have, are you city councilor members of them tonight? And they are going to have activities update. I've got Josh Farley Hanson and Ian Greenhall. Would you guys like to come forward?
Hello, I'm Josh Far. And I'm going to tell, update you on what we've done on the safe kids day fair. And a little bit on the move we had apart. So on April 22nd, the Harrisville City Council was able to help with the safe kids fair at the new game mall. The safe kids fair lasted for a few hours, but the city council had tried to doing one app or the other. And. Once we got to event, we met with our city council leader. And. Then we, who gave us our tasks to do. And we were, so we were either out helping other. Stations set up or passing out passports or going around and going and sampling the passports. When our shift was over, we each volunteer was given $10 for lunch and I was. They were to help out for at the table of. This table for safe routes. Which my kids who that walking by thing to school was good form of exercise. Other, others helped with zero, oh, zero, zero fatalities. Overall, it was a good day. Maybe you'll attend and I liked helping all the families that came through. On the outside, it was cold. And the Harrisville City Council had, UC Council had a chance to go help out with the movie at the park. Few days ago. And we were, we mostly were there to helping, helping people. All. Set up and practically dying. I should, and made them know that the platform was free not to be paid for. Sadly, it was ranked out. So. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Jordan. Lily.
Hi, my name is Lily Hanson, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about the Harrisville City Flag Design Contest. So we're really excited to do this part test. We've been wanting to do it for a really long time. And so I'll tell you a little bit about it. So this contest runs from June 1st to July 31st. And flag designs can be submitted here at the city office or online on the Harrisville Youth City Council page or just through the QR code down there. And so the winning flag design will be announced at the 2023 annual Harrisville City Fall Festival in October. We have a couple prizes. And so the first place will get a $100 gift card. Second place, $75 gift card. And third place, $50. And then a fan favorite from whatever one gets like the most after the flag design contest has ended. And we post the results on Facebook. And so we'll get a fan favorite in there for $25 as well. And so just to let you know a little bit about the criteria that we decided on. And so each flag has five simple rules. So number one, keep it simple. Number two, use meaningful Harrisville symbolism. Number three, use two to three basic colors. Number four, no lettering or seals. And number five, be distinctive, related, and appropriate. These are kind of five basic flag roles to make a good flag. And we're super excited. So please spread the word. Get your employees within their flags. This is an awesome opportunity for the whole city of Harrisville to be a part of history, basically. We're super excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian.
I'm Ian Greenhall. And I want to update you guys on our field trip to the central Weaver sewer district. When we got there, two members of their staff gave us a tour of the facility. They went through the steps that it takes to keep the water in our communities clean. And so it walked us through the entire plant, showing us how the water is cleaned. And they gave us, they showed us some of the computers that they use to keep their system running. Um. I thought this was a great opportunity for us to go because we got to see what it takes to keep the community clean. Many people don't think about this stuff. All of the, they don't think about it that much. And so I thought that was awesome. And it was a great opportunity that we could share with others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Thank you, Elizabeth, for doing all this for the youth council. Do you have anything more to say?
Okay. Your students are great. Showing things. So early. And I just have a wonderful. Things on our radar. Things I've applied. So please, yes, we need more submissions.
Thank you. Well, thanks again. All right. I'm going to be, we were counting election services presentation. Or should. So. Do you have the best history? Do you need my? Do you still drive?
Someone. To the bishop's office. I replace for Howley, if any of you worked with. But he went to the state last year and is doing, he's their elections director. It's the city council on the flight down. Yeah. And Ricky can't be here tonight. He wanted me to apologize. He's with a sick family member. But when he's been giving his presentation, it's taken about an hour. So I'm going to try and keep us going to the 15 minutes.
You're not kidding us when you're saying it takes an hour?
Yeah. But if you have questions, stop me.
Before you start, is our PB number going here? Okay, just checking.
If you have them down.
I'll send you that. Sure.
Yeah. It's supposed to be. Here, here we go.
While this is getting set up, I worked in elections for about five years. Been at Weaver County as the elections director for the last year and a half. Prior to that, I worked at the lieutenant governor's office in almost all kinds of roles that they have in their elections department. And then I was the deputy recorder in Salt Lake City in 2021. And I ran their twice voting election. But I came here. So I have some good elections experience. I got my master's degree in homeland security. I have a lot of cybersecurity background. So elections is right up my alley. But you guys good? Okay, we know the next slide. So I'm here to talk about election integrity, something that we take really seriously in Maverick County. There's kind of these four main pillars of election integrity. Vote registration, ballot verification, chain of custody, and then scanning tabulation equipment, security, voter responsibility. And go the next one. And all of this is audited. Next slide. So with voter records, our voter database, it kind of is two parts. We have statewide voter database. So we, the clerk's office will enter and put in data. Anytime someone submits a registration, we're the one that goes in and verifies social security, driver's license, and puts it in. But the lieutenant governor's office oversees everything we put in and they audit. Excellent. So this is kind of what's required to register to vote. You need a Utah driver's license or state ID or social security number. All of these are either verified with the department, with DMV or the Department of Battle Statistics or the Social Security Administration. And then unverifiable registrations are immediately rejected. We basically reach out to the voter and say, hey, we don't have a driver's license that exists with you or a social security number. You need to provide. Patient. And then all voter verification records have up to five signatures on file, which we'll get into later. So when we're maintenance seeing our records, we check for duplicate registrations. We check for deceased voters. And then we check with US Postal Service to make sure that they don't have any change of address or forwarding things. All of this we do on a weekly basis, if not more. So we do this quite often. In 2013, our indelible rate was about 20%. And last year, we got it down to 1.5%. Try to really be on top of our maintenance. That's like one of the most important parts of registration. Um, our duplicate registration, we're in a group with 28 other states. So anytime a voter registers in one of those states, they'll share that information with us. And we'll check our records to make sure we don't have that voter. We'll do the same back and share that information. We also check local obituaries. We get information department of human and vital statistics. And then, like I said, notices from the state and social security administration. Thank you. And all of this is all. One of our other most important pieces of securities are ballot envelope. That little scanning code at the bottom basically has a unique number to every ballot. But it's unique to the ballot, the election, and the voter. So no, if you'd photocopy that envelope and tried to stick a duplicate envelope in a Dropbox, we would have one on file. And when we got two, we'd immediately go, why do we have two envelopes that have the same number? And we start looking into that for fraud. Um, our ballot envelopes are made sealed during their entire verification process. And they have no personal or party identifying information on them, other than that unique code. Like I said, it's unique control number. It's auto generated. So if I were to, like, if you lost a ballot or had it stolen or destroyed, your dog ate it. Um, we can send you a replacement ballot. But the minute we generate you that replacement ballot, any prior number that was associated with you was immediately turned off. So we can only have one existing number at a time in our state system. Next slide. Like I said, we can replace anything. My dog did eat my ballot a few years ago, so it does happen. But if anyone has problems, just reach out to our office and we can get you a new one pretty much the next day in the mail. So like I said, these numbers are automatically deactivated and a new number is generated. I don't want to generate if the original has not been deactivated. This is our Agilis machine. It's our envelope sorter. Um, when ballots come in from drop boxes, they come into our office. We take the tabs off, so we don't know whose envelopes, who's other than that unique barcode. And then they immediately get put into here for signature verification. It has to have a valid control number. And it takes a photo of each signature on the ballot that will then verify after. While we're doing signature review, we compare up to the five signatures we have on staff. Um, excuse me, on file. They're either put in a good pocket or a bad pocket. If the signature matches, it's automatically stuck in. Good, we can open you and count the ballot. If the signature is off by any point, it's automatically put in a challenge bucket and it goes into a second or third signature review. Excellent. And all of this is audit as we go. When the signature is challenged, we immediately, within 24 hours, will notify the voter by text, phone, email, and we also send a letter. Um, we provide a cure letter with instructions of how to correct that ballot. And you can cure by text now. Um, and then if it's not verified, if the cure letter is returning verified, we'll count your ballot. But if it's not, then it sits there for duration. We get a lot of voters who won't return their ballots because they'll get the letter after election day and just assume that they don't have to or that their vote doesn't count. So we try to put in our cure letter that you have the two weeks after the election to still get your ballot and make sure it's counted. While we're processing ballots, chain of custody is really important. Our ballots are grouped into batches with an audit card. Um, we all initial the card when we're processing. And if there's any discrepancy, we stop and basically find what happened. We did have an issue where we had a ballot a couple elections ago where it wasn't, it got stuck. It was like a sticky envelope and it got stuck to another one. We stopped the entire floor. It doesn't matter what part of the process everyone's in. Everyone pauses. We stop till we find it, make sure it gets put in its correct spot. So we can count down to the ballot one off because we'll see it immediately on that batch card. This is our DX450. This is what actually tabulates your vote. Um, that can go to the next one. And that machine, all machines, that the Agilis order, any of our election letter that we use to process like results and get them to the state, all have to be certified by the United States Election Assistance Commission. Um, takes about six months for an update to get certified by them. So even if they change one line item in their code, it takes six months for this, like, federal government to certify that. So you take it very seriously. None of our machines are ever networked or connected to the internet. We have no modem, Wi-Fi, or internet capabilities on any of them. All our software updates are done manually. We do it with a USB. We have to go back and forth between the machines and our USBs are a great deal. Um, and we have security seals that we pre-marked logs. So if the number was off, we'd be able to catch it immediately. We hash audit every machine before and after use. And any activity by the vendor must be scheduled, supervised, logged. And it's all audited. Thank you. Um, there is a piece of voter responsibility in this puzzle. Voters have to update their addresses if they can. We can catch it with national, with the national change of address form or with any of our other searches that I talked about earlier. But sometimes people move and they don't update. So if they need to, they can go to vote.gov, doe.gov. They can also notify our office if they get a ballot to a different address. So like, if you get a ballot for your child and your child moved out, we can update that board if you let us know. And now, um, the state has a program called Ballot Tracks where you can track your ballot in a lot of time. Goes to Ballot Tracks. But the really cool thing about Ballot Tracks is as soon as your ballot gets mailed to you, you can get a call, email, or text. You'll get it as soon as we receive it, as soon as it's scanned in one of our machines and as soon as it's counted. So we'll update you every step of the way. Like I said, we audit everything. Um, it's a standard element in our administration. But we do public audits before every election, after every election. And then we're constantly auditing our process during processing. For reliable information, we like to ask people to go to weaverelections.gov or vote.gov. Um, we have social media on any form of social media you can think of. But that's where we get our most recent updated info. Last thing, permission. Do you guys have questions? I ran through that fast, sorry.
Oh, thank you.
And I left a pamphlet with that broken down with Jack. So if anyone needs anything, just let me know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No, we just not plug?
Thank you. Thank you. I've seen the incredible machines that changed our lives, right? All right. I don't ever see municipal public infrastructure district presentation for Ben Loon and Muse Development. Sam Elder.
But. Hello, Sam Elder from DA Davidson. We specialize in underwriting debt through public infrastructure districts, which is a quasi-governmental entity. And so we're traditionally municipal bond underwriters. And so was here to kind of give a presentation briefly on what maybe a public infrastructure district is. Maybe you guys have heard, heard some about it. And then to dive in specifically of how this tool might be utilized for the Ben Loon and Muse project. On, and how it can be a public-private partnership. The first few pages of the deck are just describing our group. We've been involved in, you know, nearly all of the public infrastructure districts that have been issued in the state. And do, you know, roughly around a billion to $2 billion of debt through this type of tool throughout the Internet West. On page six, it kind of gets into it. So as I just briefly mentioned, public infrastructure districts are quasi-governmental entities that have the ability to issue debt tax exempt to fund public infrastructure within private developments. The municipality is involved in the creation of a public infrastructure district. But once the district is created, it becomes a separate governmental entity that has no liability back to the municipality. So similar to special improvement districts and whatnot, they have the ability to issue debt tax exempt by leaning the property through a governmental lien. However, there is no backstop required from the city. There is no recourse back to the city. So in an event that something goes wrong within the development, the city has no liability. They were, they were passed in 2019, so they're semi-recent. There have been over now 70 PIDs created in the state have been gaining a lot of traction since they, they were created. Um, what, like I said previously, the, the proceeds from the, from the PID can only be used to fund public infrastructure. Street improvements, traffic and safety control, water improvements, roads. If any of that infrastructure is private, it cannot be financed with this tool. The, the reason why these were created was to fund new infrastructure, one without impacting the municipality's balance sheet. As we know, it's been more and more difficult to infrastructure is coming in for municipalities to pay for the public infrastructure. So this is a way to put some of the responsibility onto the development group. Um, but giving them an efficient way to finance it, to make sure that it, it happens. Uh, finance better infrastructure. This is the way that, you know, you can provide a more efficient financing tool to the real estate developer to put in the, the correct infrastructure one that is in line with the city's master plan or, or something like that. Optimize development, all the funds from this dollar sits with the national trustee. And it can only be requisitioned from, for eligible improvements. So in the case that something went wrong and a new party came in, the money is still sitting there to complete the public infrastructure. So it's a way to almost ensure during down cycles that the public infrastructure that was promised is still going to be put in. One of the other important factors is there is no impact to existing residents. Um, this is a way for future growth to pay for growth and not the current citizens within the community. There's really two main types of ways that a PID can monetize or raise capital. I'll describe the first one and then kind of bypass it since it's not what the developer in this particular development is asking for. But the first way is through a property tax above and beyond the existing property tax. So the PID can levy an additional tax, let's call it four mills, of additional property taxes over on the future residences within this community. And we can bond against what that new tax is going to generate. So. This is disclosed multiple times throughout the buying process for a future resident who decides to buy property within the district. Um, it's disclosed, I think, six times or something throughout the process, which we can describe and show you where it is. And on a separate colored piece of paper as well, saying you are buying property within the district and subject to additional taxes of X per X tax form. So that is the first way that you can raise capital to pay for the public infrastructure. The second way, um, which is the most, uh, which is another common way and what's being proposed for this development is by issuing a special assessment lien, similar to a municipality who can put a governmental lien, assessment lien on the property. You can do so through the PID. What's unique about this financing is that that lien is prepayable at any time with no penalty. So you can borrow up to one third of the finished lot value after it's got its horizontal infrastructure completed and ready to go vertical. Whatever that value is of the horizontal land, you, you can borrow one third of that value. And that's based on an appraisal that's done by a, a, a third party appraiser. How this, this type of debt has been used on, in the past is you lean the property, you put in the infrastructure. And then when the developer sells the property, you give either to a homeowner or a home builder. The developer takes the proceeds from the sale of that lot and pays the lien down entirely so that no ongoing burden gets passed to the future homeowner. So it's almost acting as a construction loan. It just gives the developer the ability to finance a tax exempt in a more efficient way to pay for that infrastructure. It has a maximum maturity of 20 years. But since it, it follow all the same rules and regulations and laws that normal special assessment warrants do. I'll pause for just a moment. I know I kind of just threw a bunch of stuff out there. I'm trying to move quickly so that we don't spend too much time describing this. But any questions on those two different types of laws? So the, the district will only have power to become a taxing entity for people to act with property within. Yeah, development. Yeah, it would never work for an existing community because you have to have 100% property ownership. And so it's very unlikely that you're going to go to an existing person who has a house and say, we're going to add additional taxes on to your property. on to your property. And so it works for new developments where the developer is choosing to place the property tax lien on their own property and then disclose that to future buyers who decide to come in. Well, once again, the proposed mechanism for the developer for Ben-Lomond Views is is to use a special assessment lien. That's that gets paid off at time that he sells the lot. So that nothing gets passed on to the future homeowner. So there won't be any needed disclosure because they're not they're not intending to pass anything on. So he's not asking for additional property taxes.
So the first homeowner will have to pay it. It'll be additional, but what is normal house fee will be?
In a traditional PID that has a property tax levy and the ability to levy an additional property tax, yes, they would be required to pay the additional property tax on whatever the assessed value of the land.
This is what you're saying.
No, for him and for this particular development, he's asking for the ability to lean the property to raise capital. And then at the time that he sells the lot before he sells it, like when he sells the transaction to the homeowner, he's going to take the proceeds from that and pay the lien down. So the homeowner is just left with the free and clear. Oh, similar to any other home that we have. They would go get a mortgage and and.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, because I mean, it's very common like in in a lot of the conversations that we have with the municipalities that they use a property tax bond as a way to raise additional capital. Just in this particular instance, the developer doesn't want to add additional property taxes on the property and therefore is choosing to ask for just an assessment lien that will get paid off before it transfers ownership.
What about if the developer defaults?
Then he would lose land to the bondholders. So the the bondholders would take control before closing on the property and then they would find a developer similar to any other construction loan to finish the project.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to and they're obviously motivated since they want to be repaid.
Yes.
So you're dividing this pie to piece of I have into multiple sections for each parcel that's going to be sold. It seems to be what's happening is it's going to take a long time, perhaps even years on this development here before it's completely developed. So somebody's paying something, where's the money coming from? Because he's mature and I don't want a piece of land, piece of land, piece of land. So where's the developer paying dividends because you've got this big plot out there, but it's only been paid in. I'm wary, much now I'm wary of that. Because I don't want to see this passed on to consumer.
Yeah, you so you can mandate within the governing document, which outlines the parameters and how a PID can be used, that it's mandatory that nothing gets passed on to the owner. So
So who pays the bond?
So the so the developer is required to pay the bond at lot sale. So meaning that let's say, for example, he puts a hundred thousand dollars, let's call it a thirty thousand dollar lien on a ninety thousand dollar lot that he's going to sell. At time that he sells the lot for ninety thousand dollars, he's going to take thirty thousand and he's going to pay the bond back. And that lien is goes away for that lot. So so he's paying back the 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 bond, the developer is.
And the people who issued the bond are okay with that because there's still this big amount of money out there that they're holding and investing.
Yeah, so they're taking the risk that whatever we project in the development, whatever we're bonding against, is going to sell. And in an event that it doesn't sell, any property that is still owned by the developer, he's going to lose his land if he if he fails to pay.
Okay, so that's the catch. That's what I mean.
Yeah. Great question. So it's a way to this is not taking the liability off the developer to 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 perform. He still has he's obligated or motivated to sell the property to pay the bonds back, right? To make money on the backend after his debt service is repaid. But it also ensures that, one, the public infrastructure is funded through a mechanism that has helped with the third-party trustee where the funds are held and to also ensure that nothing is passed on to the future owner. I kind of outlined in the next section just the creation process and how it works. Can read through it, but ultimately what happens is when the council agrees to entertain the idea of creating a PID, the developer would submit a petition, a letter of intent in a governing document. The petition and L Y are more formalities, just describing the project and their intent to try to ask for a public infrastructure district. The governing document actually rules how it governs governs how that PID can be utilized. So to my point earlier on this particular PID, if the council didn't want an ongoing tax to be placed on to allow that, then you can control that within the governing document. So you can write within there that this PID doesn't have the ability to levy taxes. It can only use a special assessment lien, and that lien is mandatory to be repaid at transfer of ownership or something, right, to protect the ability to pass that on. So there's other controls and parameters that you can write within this governing document, such as the maximum amount of debt that the PID can issue. Right? And and other things that are described here in this packet that you can look through. It will describe how the board transitions over time. So similar to an HOA, right? Where it initially starts with the develop the land owner and then they're designated and ultimately transitions to the homeowners. In this particular instance, we wouldn't anticipate any homeowners having control because nothing's being passed on to the future homeowner.
So I'm concerned about one thing. At least I'm speculating. Let's say the developer defaults. So the holders then initially the bond now own the land. But there's still a major capital deficit there where he has used money to build and then is default. What does that mean property value of the land? For the next movement request, they're going to have, how does that reflect on the city because we are endorsing?
It's no different.
Speculation.
Yeah.
Your speculation. The blocks that happened many times in the United States were a developer and this people on the project, I live in one of those. And we watched open debt, open holes sit there for months, months, years because the developers just walked away. And I want to see that happen.
Yeah. Um, the the investors on this particular that that buy this type of debt are high-yield municipal bond funds. They're Goldman Sachs Asset Management, New B, Pimco, and Vesco. Smart real estate investors that are very sophisticated in making the decisions that they do in terms of risk. They're going to underwrite this deal with scrutiny to make sure that they believe that there's feasibility, that it does get complete. But there is no ultimate protection against the project being complete or not, whether you use this type of tool or any other conventional source of financing. And I would say that this tool probably provides you a little bit more comfort and that you're giving them a more efficient tool than what's out in the conventional market to make sure to help incentivize the development to actually happen. This is the second side is what I alluded to earlier, where the money actually sits with the third-party trustee who can only use or disperse those funds to pay for. It actually sits there and is put in because that's all it can be used for.
Process like this too.
To review it is however long ultimately you need, right? As long as there's back and forth dialogue about what you want to see and where there's concerns and how we can address those concerns. I don't know how long that process takes. I don't want to put a timeline to it. The process for me to go to market, once the tool is created, is about sixty to ninety days. Then we can close the bonds and raise the capital.
Infrastructure. We're just years into this already and we're tired.
Yeah, we're ready. And I'm ready to go with whatever we have the tool to do it. So from my standpoint, right, I'm just the underwriter of the debt. So I'm just here to raise capital and inform you guys what the intention of the developer is is planning to do here. We are happy to put together a petition, a law-abiding governing document, formally kick off a process. It's no obligation for the city to approve it, just the intent to start having a discussion and talking through the governing document and the parameters of how the city wants to see this tool used for this particular project.
Does it give you any movement between say now and then? Because right now, what's what's going on? There's no movement. As far as our constituents can tell, the only benefit we've got is whole thing. We've destroyed a couple of restaurants up at the park. And there's nothing to show for it.
To the development, I would prefer the developer to speak to the actual development itself. And so I think that's a discussion that we can have alongside this process, right? But I do think that if the city does want to optimize this development in many different ways, this tool is a very attractive tool for all real estate developers to complete improvements into finance real estate development. So it is a it is a tool to help raise a significant, there's significant capacity, bonding capacity in this transaction through a bid to to help accelerate this development.
What would the interest rates use to be for this type of bonds? Is that an attractive part of the development?
Yeah, it's a yeah, that's the attractive part. The rates range depending on the the credit profile of the development, obviously. Better locations, similar to any other deal, right, get better interest rates. I would say right now it's ranging probably in the six and a half to seven and a half percent range. Whereas in the conventional market, you're probably seeing more like twelve to sixteen percent. So it's a it's, like I said, a really attractive tool to to help raise capital in a in a really difficult, rising rate environment that we don't have much control over.
Let me just say that I this is like my third time for this, so I twice for you. This was presented last night in Simmerborn. The thing that I got sure that was presented last night that maybe wasn't made clear today is that you can't proceed without having someone take this over, right, as far as having a governing.
A governing document?
So you can't, Mr. Klaiver, can I? Set this. So that's why you're here is to try and present this.
That's right. Without the tool you keep, so the 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 PID is literally just a financing mechanism entity that can issue tax-exempt debt. Without that, they would need the city or an RDA or some other SID, some other governmental entity that can issue tax-exempt debt. Without those tools, there's no way for him to do that. He'd have to access the capital markets or the conventional markets in a standard way. So by approving a PID, you're giving him the ability to issue tax-exempt debt, right, through an off-balance-sheet, non-recourse entity that you have no that has no liability back to you. That was the reason it was created, right? You could incentivize real estate developments by giving them by getting putting an SID and leaning the property and backstopping the reserve fund, but that impacts your ability to bond against your normal balance sheet. And so this became a tool as a way to to help pay for things like this and 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 kick things off the ground without there being liability. But you do, as a municipality, have control over the creation process to put parameters and protections around it that you want to see. It's meant to be a public-private partnership, right? Not a one-sided tool.
But we have our protection by creating that document saying we agree with these parameters, these rules.
That's right. What we would do is we would submit a proposal. Here's what we want to do within the governing document. You would then review it and just say, okay, we want to change X, Y, and Z. And then we would talk about those parameters and how it makes sense and maybe where it doesn't make sense. If there are certain things that you would request that might impact the ability for the the bonds to actually get executed and be performed, then I would be there to say, you know, this is a good this is good feedback. I see what you guys are willing to do. This is how it might be negative in terms of impacting the marketability. So it would just be a negotiation. Like I said, it's a public-private partnership. But we have put a proposal. I think what's very unique about this particular trans the PID that he's requesting is is there is no property tax. We we haven't seen really this type of tool request be made for the public infrastructure districts. There's one that was done in Colville for one of the PIDs that has no ability to tax as well. But that was the only other one that was this and mostly we don't, there's not a lot of issues with the special assessment lien because it's with a with a mandatory prepayment. Because there's no ongoing burden to the to the homeowner. Where there is, when there is additional property taxes, we will exploit when we feel it's beneficial versus when it's not, and the council ultimately decide whether they want to see that or say you're not.
So this is essentially making a way for him to tax himself at later date, just pay us. He's coming with the back. We're the instrument that can do this.
Yeah, the governmental lien is an instrument that can do a tax exempt. It's it's like a conventional construction loan that has a little bit better, more favorable structure and can issue a tax exemption rates. So the the equivalent, right, if you took like six and a half percent or seven percent interest rate, if if they were to issue this as a taxable deal instead of a tax exempt, this the you would need to be about twelve percent.
So that's where his savings comes in. That's why he this is an interest.
Yeah. But once again, with no liability back to the city, obviously you want to protect how how it can be used, right, since you have control in the creation. But after that, you kind of want to step, the the purpose of the PID is for the city to step away from the the entity altogether so that there is no liability.
But that's the reason there's a third entity that's the money.
Yeah, then there's a trustee that we it's it's required of that we have an actual national third-party trustee that's a safe haven to hold the hold the funds and that the the tool cannot be abused. And within the bonds, there's carve-outs for a district attorney, right, a district accountant, a district manager, just people to manage the the whole governmental process since real estate developers are not public officials and don't understand it is full of.
So we expect Mr. Klaiver tonight. Is there a reason he's not? He just wanted you to present this?
I don't know if he was expecting anything or maybe he was expecting a little bit more about just public infrastructure districts in general and what we were asking here, not so much development related. I don't think he wanted to, I guess, muddy the waters or make it too complicated, but I'm sure that he's willing to address any questions or concerns on the development.
So when you say infrastructure, give a definition of what that means.
So roads, curbing gutter, sewer improvements, water improvements. Really, all that can be financed is whatever is deeded to a public entity. It has to be signed off by a third-party engineer and then, of course, if the city is willing to accept the public infrastructure, right? Because obviously the city engineer will need to sign off and accept it. So those are the things that can be funded. Anything that is not signed off cannot be funded.
Those things have to match our standards, right, before I said.
Yeah.
Acceptance.
And if there was certain infrastructure that you wanted to limit, that was public for some reason, you could do that. Could say, I only want this to be used for, you know, roads, curb gutter, but not water sewer. I I don't have any particular reason why you would do that, but you could, that's one of the things you could technically outline within a governing document. Specify the infrastructure.
So when we're putting this governing document together, who would be involved in that? What what who are the players?
So um, we would, we would have on our side of it likely myself, the developer, and a addition that put the likely myself, the developer and a, a, the, the future district council of the municipality who would understand public finance, would submit this governing document, whoever you wanted to bring in from your end. If anybody, you know, is welcome. A bond counsel or a municipal advisor or whatever might be, right? So we work hand in hand with all of them to ensure that we're keeping the interest of all parties in mind.
So we could bring someone else in.
Yeah.
Then all of us would be involved. I see. Is that correct?
Yeah. So you would be involved in the, in providing anything that you wanted to see within the governing document that you felt like was needed. The city staff would obviously be dialed in on working to make sure that you guys are protected. Your role in this, in the end of it would be to vote on the creation of a governing document. So once the parameters have all been outlined, you felt like all needs were addressed, you would vote on that.
So there's a little bit of assessment, like, yeah, that.
Yeah. So like, for example, tonight would be like, if the council is willing to entertain the idea, then we'll start submitting a formal request. Right? By all means, it doesn't mean any obligation of the city to do anything other than to review or request, right? And then we would start having a dialogue and at a point in time where we feel as a public private, you know, relationship that we're in a place where the governing document is protected on both sides and does what we wanted to do for this project, we would put it up for vote.
Mayor. Yeah, I just have a question for Jenny. Jenny, is, is Doug ready for this? Is he ready to move on this? Because it sounds like this is going to take an enormous amount of time and we've already given, we've already given him more time than we really legally needed to. We've bent over backwards and we're still nowhere. And then all we're going to do is put in gutters and streets and things like that, which will not happen this year again. We're going to be another year out.
So I guess I can't speak to what Doug's timeline is. All I can fill you in on is what he has submitted to me as a timeline. And so a few weeks ago, he said, he submitted a timeline that he would receive some bids and have some potential and set up the, the some. Set what my opinion based on the improvements that he was going to put in all be put in at this time. So I didn't feel like it needed a complete season for that. But again, I don't know. I've had enough conversations with potential inquiries to the city about status and process of the project and what this council's temperature would be to renegotiate any type of amendment to the original development agreement if a different purchaser were involved in the project, things like that. So if you're asking for my opinion, that's a tricky one for me. It's, it's obviously your decision on whether you want to move forward with the P I D. I will say that I don't think it's to the detriment of the city to move forward on something like this because even if we went through a default process with the developer, that's going to be timely as well.
Two, two other comments I would just add to that generally, and I'm speaking not to this project in particular, but to projects as a whole. When you get other financing in place, it will motivate other potential lenders to get involved in the deal because they see the end result being produced, which is the vertical homes and the lots being sold to pay them back. And so when there is actual traction, meaning if we have this tool in place, right? There would likely be other lenders that would be willing or equity players to come and put their money to work here on this project. The second thing is in the case that it went anywhere else to any other developer, this tool is attractive and will bring in more people.
And this stays with the project.
It stays with the project. It's, it's, it's a district around that parcel of land. And so if this tool has the ability for any other, what I'm saying is that there will be more people interested in doing this deal with this tool in place than there would be without it.
So I think what he's saying is even though anything happens to the developer now, we just have this in place for another developer and this would.
Attract that issue.
Speed of the.
Yes.
So I guess a way to describe that, this is a decision to make, the P I decision. This obviously Doug's team utilizes this tool, the tool itself would help.
That, that's exactly, that's exactly right. And then what I would say is that there may be reasoning which would be, I would be happy to educate further on why allowing a little bit more flexibility than what the current developer is asking for. Why adding a little bit more flexibility, how this tool could be used might be even more helpful if it's a development decision of the council, right? So not to say that you would still choose to do that or not, this tool alone, the way that I described it is going to incentivize other real estate developers to be of interest in this deal. But I would also allude to the fact that you might be able to do this with a little bit more flexibility that would even attract it more.
So we need to take a person out of this and as far as, yeah, make it a person, Mr. Plant. We just need to have a developer in our heads that needs to go along with this, right?
I think that's the smartest way to view this. I think that in any particular instance, that's how I would, if I was representing the municipality, that's how I would view it, right? Is that you wanting to see a successful project with or without the development group? I think this is a full intention of the development group to use this tool and, and be successful in this deal. But from a council perspective, in any development, whether it's moving along great or not, I would view this as a development related tool. Is it right? Is it the right fit for a specific development? And I'll tell you this much, this tool is not right for every project. I would never stand up here and tell you that if you have a 50 unit, single family town home development, you should be using this tool. I don't think it's the right tool for that. I don't think it should be used for that, right? And, but this type of tool, this scale, they're hard to finance. Their large scale developments require a lot of infrastructure and that's what this tool was created to, to help achieve.
So all we are asking tonight is for us to say we're interested. We're not committed. We're not, nothing on paper for us to do except that we'd be interested here.
Yeah, either hear more or allow us to submit documents to, to like actually initiate it, right? We don't, I mean technically we could just submit a petition and L O Y, but it doesn't mean anything unless the council is willing to entertain it. And so like I said, and, you know, we'd submit it and there is typically is a fee associated with submitting a petition and L O Y for staff's time to review it. We would do that and initiate the process. And then where it goes from there is ultimately a conversation. So all of them start.
So we can be educated more between now and.
Yeah, I know it's just, you know, I'm happy to be a resource in meeting with each of the council members and, and staff to further explain and, and how this might be helpful and what things might be considered in a governing document. And, you know, there's the potential to bring in other people into the room to, you know, validate those, those things. But I think ultimately there is no intention for anyone to try to have the council approve something that they're not aware of. I think we want you to fully understand this prior to voting on it and we wouldn't even take it to a vote until we knew that you guys understood you were voting on.
Can the developer use this as a escrow?
It wouldn't be quote unquote escrow. I mean, it would, on, once it's funded, the, the, the proceeds are held within the trustee and they're accruing interest. So they want to draw it on and pay, move it immediately into the ground. They're all, they're motivated to do so because the time's ticking. So there's, there's actually law that says that you have to have a reasonable ability to expend the funds in three years. So you can't just raise a massive amount of capital that you're going to expense over 10 years. You have to reasonably be able to spend it in three years. So to your point, council will. Is, uh, is that you, uh, you wouldn't lean the entire Ben Lowen views project. You would likely just lean the first 200 units or 250 units.
Yeah, it's right now set for the different phases that he has to accomplish, complete that phase for tomorrow. So that meant it'd be sectioned.
Yeah. And we, yeah, and to avoid the ability of a slowdown, right? He might not want to lean to raise too big of a bond because then he's got to sell more to, to pay it back and.
I see that's where I explained. I've seen the big landlord picture. That's, that's a lot of capital sitting out there just sticking.
Yeah.
These, you know, here minimized selling, it's simple loss.
Yeah. And, and, and once again, the, the capital markets will dictate what's reasonable and what's not, right? They'll underwrite the deal. They'll decide, look, I'm not going to buy this property because I don't see an avenue in which you're going to repay me back in the right amount of time. I'm not going to invest. So when I take a deal to market, I'm underwriting the deal, right? And ultimately deciding what we go to market with. And I'm not going to go to market with something I don't believe is executable. And if I lean this entire property day one, that would not be executable. So I wouldn't do it.
So there's some sample on sides.
We underwrite it, the capital markets underwrite it as well, right? So there's, there's multiple banks, investment banks that understand the, the real estate industry, making sure that what's taken to market is reasonable. And then to the last thing was like, we can't bond against just what we hypothetically think they're going to sell for. We actually have to go get a third party appraisal to, to, to come in from like a group like C B R E or, you know, call leaders or somebody to verify that they believe that the, the lots will sell for that price.
Well, it's good security, however, may not worry.
Point of interest might be entered. You might want to know is that the city approached last year asking him a payment considering we came to this. And it's taken a year later. So we have had some interest in this then, it's a tool to get this.
Yeah. And if I can be helpful in any other things happening within the city, right? I mean, in terms of seeing if it's a right fit for a particular development and how it might be utilized. I'm happy once again to, to be a resource for the city and, and how this tool can be helpful for you and, and financing things that you want to see. And, and, and the last thing I was just going to say is there's a bunch of case studies on here. Most of the time this is developer driven, meaning they're asking for this. You, as you alluded to, it, it just, sometimes the city's requesting it as a way to try to push people along. In South Salt Lake on, on page 22, they had a sewer capacity issue. They didn't have the balance sheet to improve the sewer system. So they basically told the development groups that they needed to participate within a P I D to raise the capital to pay for that sewer district. So the development groups had essentially taxed themselves to ultimately pay for a sewer improvement that those, that development was going to impact. So it's almost like a impact fee replacement to some extent in that rather than collecting the impact fees and trying to fix problems, you're financing and fixing the, making sure the problems don't exist in the first place upfront. And then the impact fees can help essentially take the burden off down the road.
Any other questions?
Yeah. That's the answer. You saw me.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come up here. I'll drive back home.
So do we want to, we don't really have a vote on this, but do we want to, what is your, what's your.
I make the motion. We support conceptually exploring the idea of four long views development.
Motion in a second.
Hi.
Thank you. Have your.
Thank you. We'll start working on some things and be in front of the council. All, also if you want to circulate more contact information to the rest of the group so that they can contact you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Difficult concept, dude.
It is. It is so new in, in the state, right? This has been used around, I didn't say this, but around the nation for decades. Called different things in different states, C D D from Florida, Pitts from Texas, C I E's in Idaho, metro districts in Colorado. It just new to Utah. And so we appreciate you guys taking the time to, to listen and hopefully we can be helpful.
Thank you. Okay. Item D, discussion possible action. We got resolution 2306, the resolutions without the road safety plan.
I hope you guys all got a chance to see that. It, it's a book. So before I get started, this is part of, we've got two grants earlier this year for the safe sidewalks. It was actually through the state. This is the federal side of it for the safe roads. This will start the framework to be able to put in for larger grants for not only the public works department, but also the police department to help make our roads safer. But before I want to get started, because this was such a large project, I wanted to thank a few people real quick. City Administrator Jenny Knight, Public Works Director Justin Schinzel, Police Chief Mark Wilson, and Police Administrative Assistant Jackie Benmetru. Without them, it would have been really tough. It was definitely a team effort and there was a lot of stuff that had to go in there to meet the federal guidelines for the federal transportation board. So with that being said, we formed a road safety board and I'm going to let you know who the member, members are. We did meet twice and this, this board will meet every quarter to go over safety data, ideas, and implementation for future projects. The board members are City Administrator Jenny Knight, Council Member Max Jackson, Harrisville Engineer Matt Robertson, Harrisville Emergency Management Jack Foal, Harrisville Police Sergeant Alicia Davis, H H I Corporation Vice President Cliff Holkinson, and representing Harrisville citizens, Mike Schinzel, Ryan Barker of Northir, the Fire Department and myself. With the adoption of the safety plan, we will submit to the Harrisville Road, I'm sorry. We will submit the Harrisville Safety Road Plan to the U S Department of Transportation and start going after more grant specific funding for our programs to make Harrisville's city roadways safer for all of us that use them. This plan will be put on the Harrisville City webpage to show the public what we are doing and what we're doing to make our city safer and more transparency on the data and budgets that we use to accomplish our zero fatalities or serious injury goals. Any questions? Hopefully you've got to see that document.
Please.
It, it went pretty fast. We went through six generations of that, I think. And there was a lot of stuff that has to be put in with the new Transportation Secretary wanted. And I had to make sure that we hit all those little points so we can start going after these grants. The first grant has to be submitted by July 10th. So I have, we have very short time put in and we come up with some great ideas on the police department side and public works and that will also be great for the city. New street lights, street signs, radar stuff, you know, message boards. There's a lot, you know, all the street signage through Harrisville, a lot of them don't have our logo. So I'm looking at doing a full replacement of every sign. It's quite a large. Grant. Say the least on this.
So these grants require that this document.
Yes.
The city has this document.
Yep. And this is actually part of the grant, this document. So, yes.
Um, motion, resolution twenty-three dash six, resolution to adopt their express safety. Also.
I have the motion in a second, this is enrolled on the police, uh, councilman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Weiss.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, writer. I look forward to seeing what we can accomplish with that. All right, item E, discussion possible action to adopt resolution twenty-three dot seven, which is a resolution regarding. We're counting for surveyors. Jenny Knight.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We've been in a existing contract with Weaver County. Our subdivision code requires that all paths be sent to Weaver County Surveyor's Office for control to do before they can be reported. And our agreement with them basically indicates what pricing point that we set, the vendor does pay that fee to Weaver County, but the integral loading that kind maintains the E schedule for those reviews. They were closing the issue before five years for review next year because we have to renew the entire state code. I don't continue to be a requirement after we go through the subdivision departments. So I didn't want to have the agreement be in place for five years if we remove that. So, so this is a year agreement that we will enter to. We do have subdivision appointments updated every year, so there may be a couple. We are staff is ready to get up to the year and continue services that I can't screen. Which is typically a.
So this is for one year.
Any more discussion or questions? I have a motion.
I think the resolution twenty-three dash seven, resolution for general. We prepare for surveyors' service.
I have a motion in a second. Councilmember Lovin.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes.
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 Thank you, motion carries. Right, that's the end of our business items. This is the longest meeting we have for a while. Um, I've never quite as probably convinced that this is about getting rid of the. Three minutes of, as you remain and your concerns.
Um, I actually don't have a concern, I'm here just to make you guys aware that we exist. Yes, Megan Moreton, the founder and executive director of, uh, Business that is here in Harrisville called Broadway on the Side. And we are a performing arts organization, hoping to eventually just be a fine arts organization. And our goal is to really address the diversity issue of, um, polarizing things and demographics regarding either race, color, belief, whatnot. Um, it doesn't matter, we just want a safe place for kids and adults and everybody to be able to enjoy the arts in a safe and uplifting environment. And so, um, one of the, currently what we do is, uh, youth programs, but we also do fun cabarets. We, uh, we're about to put one on in August. We have our season opener happening in July. We're located currently in the strip mall over by Walmart. And, um, we love our organization, we got lots of great feedback, but, um, we can't move forward on a lot of things without our municipal support. And so we wanted to let you guys know that we exist and what our long-term goal is. One of our biggest long, long-term goals is to bring a fine arts center to Weaver County, either in a municipality like Harrisville, um, or to Weaver County itself in one of the areas. So, um, I will talk to the Weaver Commission as well so that they are aware that we exist. But currently we don't have a, we don't have a fine arts center in Weaver County. The closest one that, uh, I believe is somewhat near what we need to actually uh, do what, what we're looking to do is all the way down in Taylorsville, and that one's not even that big. And then you have one up in Cash Valley. I know the director at the Brigham Center, the Brigham City Fine Arts Center, which is a lovely organization and we work hand in hand with them sometimes. However, the type of, uh, fine arts organization that or center that we're talking about is one that is more akin to something like the Lincoln Center that has a professional quality theater similar to the Capitol Theater, but then also has recital halls. If any of you are familiar with now the former Harris Fine Arts Center at BYU that they, um, have torn down our building to new center, uh, they would have recital halls so that students could, um, go and perform. Uh, there really aren't a lot of venues around here for teachers to be able to rent, to be able to have these type of things. It's hard to get into schools, even the elementary schools in the area don't have, am I over three minutes? I'm sorry. Okay. Um, they don't. They, some of the elementary schools, junior highs don't have a great state of the arts theater system. And they're great and they, they work and I'm not poo-pooing them. I was a teacher for years in Washington State before my husband dragged me out to Utah. But, um, and then we have these wonderful high schools that have theirs. They're constantly doing stuff in, which is wonderful and we don't want to fight that. We are all about collaboration at Broadway on the Side and, um, it's funny, somebody asked, they're like, oh, what, what theater did they break off of? They're like, excuse me? Because apparently there's a lot of, um, people that are unhappy somewhere, then they start their own thing somewhere else. And what we're hoping, I actually talked to my cousin who runs the, um, he runs the fundraising, the FRCI group, if you're familiar with it, down in Salt Lake. It's like, well, do you guys have an arts coalition? And we don't, the theaters don't talk to each other. But if we were able to do that, the need that it can fill for the community is huge. Um, the need for Weaver County is just being able to bring that cohesiveness and availability of not just participating in the arts, but exploring your own interest in the arts. And I'm not just talking about music, dance, theater. Let's say there's someone who's interested in costume design or in, um, sculpting or any side of the arts. It, and I know Ogden has a little bit of an arts council down there. Um, Harrisville, we don't have one here, North Ogden doesn't have one. They have the amphitheater, but it's unfinished, so I have a plan to talk with them, I've made contact with them. And so, um, you really want to be able to provide this so that if, let's say, there's a dance teacher or a vocal teacher or piano teacher that maybe can't get into the state center for one reason or another to have a recital, then we have a place that it may cost a fee, but nothing as exorbitant as say running out of period gypsy. Before we took residents over there, that's what we were looking to do, is do like a fifty-fifty. We'll provide the entertainment, all of that, you guys take fifty percent of the proceeds and just let us be here. Um, and just operate for three days. And the cost was so prohibitive just for that and they take an amount of ticket sales. And again, I love them, this is not against them, but when you have teachers and you have schools and you have touring companies that want to come through here, and we don't have anything for them. They can't always go to the period, they can't always go to Ogden High School or Weaver. Um, I know there are other high schools in the area as well. And so we want to be able to, to create that so that it's not just for performing arts, but let's say the city needs a gala or the county needs a gala, that would be an appropriate place for it. Or let's say AA needs a place to meet, that would be a place for it. So we could have classrooms in there as well. So we aren't talking a big substantial thing, which is why it's down the road and it's going to take land. But we're working on it, we're now entering or exiting our third fiscal year. Our fiscal year ends in August, which means we're now able to start applying for grants and they'll actually say, yes, we will grant you things, whereas before it's been, oh, this is a great application. You're not old enough. And so we, we have all the things in place, we are just looking for support, so. Just, you know, do you guys have any questions for me? Or I'd love to get on your agenda sometime, but I just wanted to make you aware of that, that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Of course, uh, if you want more information, it's Broadway on the Side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, fellow councilmen, mayor. Um, my name is Lou Gaz. I live at nine seventy-five North Harrisville Road. And Jenny used to be my neighbor twice. My concern tonight that I want to bring up to you is the traffic on our road. I've lived in Harrisville for forty-seven plus years. And during that time, we've had, um, changes, it's like cyclical changes. When I started out, when we moved into this neighborhood, everybody had kids. Everybody had, certainly more kids than me, we had a whole castle of kids on this road. And I'm speaking particularly of Harrisville Road, North Harrisville Road. So, and as the years went by, the kids grew up, lived away, then there was just us old folks. But that changed too. We, our grandkids moved in, didn't move in, but they came to visit. Other families moved in as they all want to do. And we have a new, whole new generation of kids on our street. The thing that I have seen lately is the traffic on North Harrisville Road does not adhere to, to the speed limit sites. Absolutely not. Uh, it is twenty-five miles an hour. I was a working mom, I understand that parents want to get home to their children. And we have that lovely stoplight, let's see, right over there, right across the street. And they come out from, uh, what's that road that IRS is on, Budweiser's on. All these roads, we are increasing manufacturing and business people here. And they want to get home to their families. And North Harrisville Road sits right a block in from flight. I can see it in my mind because I've been there. And let's see, if I turn this way, I can hurry down this road. Which they do, and they do go faster. Honestly, honestly. Sunday, Saturday, right then, I actually saw a patrol van on our, two times on Saturday. They are not generally patrolling our roads. With the new subdivisions, we have big trucks coming in with pulling other big pieces of equipment. I know this truck pulling a great big tractor was doing forty-five miles an hour.
And you've gone six minutes.
Okay, sorry. I am saying that something needs to be done over there. We want our children protected. We're worried about it, I'm not the only one, I don't have children, I have grandchildren. But we need the city to help us do something to protect our children. We don't have sidewalks, we don't have, we have road. So, thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? I know we can close the comments and move on. Six, this is Mayor Councilwoman. I'm going to. Return.
Yeah.
A small report.
Okay. Okay. The question you posed earlier, uh, to Glenn, he's probably been with you for three months. Prior to that, he worked with the Attorney for a month. He'll cover for himself to get the favor. So he's, he really has put his heart and soul into this. And I can't say thank you, applause to him for doing so. Um, Jerry and Mayor have asked us to kind of give him a brief review. Uh, as you all saw, financials came out this last month. Uh, and what we've done is our own opponents to try to save spending. Public Works has really gone after it this year and self-performed a lot of work. Uh, a lot of storm drain projects. One storm drain project in the park that you can now fully see it's working the way it's supposed to, pulling back as much water as we possibly can, so the residents down on the point of a flood. We've done a stormwater project out in the three hundredth north that a lot of people were, uh, at land. I mean, it was inundated by roots and backing up into their yards. Something's wrong, we went in, dug up the road, we piped it, so it got piped directly into the stormwater system and helped save a bunch of homes there. Lot of projects, lot of good going on. As you can see, we're still working heavily on grants and we received with, with the federal earmark funding and the, the road, the safety grants, uh, safe sidewalks. It's about four point five million dollars excess funding that the public works was brought in in this past fiscal year to help with roads, infrastructure, things of that nature. Working very diligently on moving forward as you got your little cots tonight for the groundbreaking ceremony. We're excited for that, can we have that? Have you guys all in attendance? That's my report.
Justin's a little hard to follow, I have not saved or brought in millions of dollars. But we, we've done a small part, so I'll just highlight a few things that we do in parks to try to do our work, stay money. Uh, a few years ago, we had, there's multiple ponds inside this splash bathroom, we had the feature pond which supplied water to all the features. Now, the vendor we were working with recommended that we replace it. A staff member decided to pull the pond themselves, lot of parts himself. Paid by the city, taken to Johnson Landrick and they rebuilt it for sixty-three dollars instead of replacements, seven, eight thousand dollars. So that's one tree removal, we always try to do our own tree removal unless, unless we think there's an issue that we're going to follow the bill or something. Uh, we did get nine trees this last year and they were for six hundred dollars, so that's the savings of about forty-five hundred. We try to take them ourselves where we can, maybe in the park uh, production sub out, right, so it's nineteen hundred, that includes the movie rights to show it. Um, for eight thousand dollars a year that we just started, uh, the, the last year, the city purchased the equipment for seven thousand dollars. Arsenal Act has taken over producing those, uh, for four hundred and eighty dollars now. So by July twenty-fourth, movie, the equipment will pay for itself and the city will provide it. Or movies in the park events for around five hundred dollars per movie, per movie, and so nineteen hundred dollars. So that's a savings of about six thousand dollars. And, uh, it, it, it was a good event, the last one we had was, in my opinion, well attended, we have a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty people and I could count, uh, come in, this Josh did, shut down early, but I, I do consider a success. And people have thought, by the time we shut it down, people were expecting us to tell it's time to build, it's coming. So, uh, one other one. Uh, new playground, you know, you may or may not know grants take a lot of time, a lot of effort. We submitted the right, the right grant. Uh, and as you know, we're funded for that, so that saved the city about forty-five thousand dollars uh, to put that new playground in on that topic. It was ordered yesterday, twenty-seven weeks out, lead time to get the equipment, they will store it until we're ready to put it in, but they're anticipating spring of twenty-two. So that's kind of that. Another thing we took on ourselves is when we take out that old equipment or when, before they install the new equipment, we will take on ourselves taking out the old chips. Yeah, and that's the savings of three thousand dollars. So, and there's other small projects, but at the end of the day, it all adds up. When you look at a budget for a city, uh, the. When you look at a budget for a city, the parks and rec side of things, it's, it's small compared to Public Works and, and police. But we, we do try to do our part. We're doing some good things. So overall, in, in just these few circumstances, it's the savings of sixty-six thousand dollars that Parks and Rec has been able to push forward to save the city and just trying to do our part. So, that's it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Relax while you're all asleep, right? So. We just finished up writing a best grant for the police department. What that will do is pay fifty percent of our body armor. And unlike everybody else, I'm not looking to save money with that. I'm looking to provide more and better armor with that money. So what that does for us is for the same amount that we're buying this soft body armor, we can now start buying the carriers and the plates and stuff to go with those. With all the revenues and all the new shootings that happened the last month. It's just getting more dangerous and more dangerous. So we want to be able to find our officers with better protection. So it does save some money, but saves it for getting more equipment for our. The radios that we've all talked about forever and ever. It's pushed off till first quarter next year. Motorola is dragging their feet on getting, anybody that's staying with Motorola has the upgrades to their radios. And Motorola is dragging their feet, so we can't switch until the Motorola customers catch up to us. So we bought Harris, we're ready to go, but we're getting dragged down by the other ones, so. Just the other day Walmart came in and asked us to partner with them on an event to raise money for the Children's Miracle Network. That event will be on July fifteenth from ten AM till two. So if any of you'd like to come down, that would be a great opportunity. They're trying to earn at least twenty thousand dollars for this organization. The fire department will be there as well with us. So be a good opportunity to come and support Walmart. They do a lot for us. They've given a lot to us. They, this year alone, they donated a grill to the city and a three thousand dollar check to support our shop of the hero. Dennis informed me today that Ian, our IP person, are also working on a cybersecurity grant. So, which is starting to be a big thing. So that would be good for the city if we can get that. And I guess one of our biggest problems right now is the transient population down by Walmart. In the last couple of weeks, we've had at least eight disorderly car, not criminal miscreants with spray paint. Yeah, mostly around the strip malls around Walmart. I've spoke with the new property management down there. They're concerned. People defecate behind the building. It's kind of a mess down there right now with, with the summer population. So we're trying to really work hard on that. Some of the past grants that we've written this last year that we've got was for the camera grant. As all you guys know, we were able to upgrade all our camera gear. With that, we were also able to upgrade server that the city uses. So that was a cost saving for that as well. We were able to get a few smaller grants from Jason Reed, Reed Project donated, we, fifteen hundred dollars. We had a three thousand dollar DOJ grant, some stuff in between there. Place we save the biggest money in grants is highway safety money. We do a lot of DUI shifts to protect citizens. We get drunk drivers off the road and they are all paid for by the state. We pay our officers out and we're. Over the cops, we have written a cops grant for two employees. I'm not sure when we're going to hear. We get that or not, I would imagine November, December.
What, what, that we're, this is the alcohol application, say, yeah, based on.
The beer tax funds that they give. This year, those were used to offset the grant for the camera system. So it's a fifty fifty grant that was used for our fifty percent of that money to upgrade all the cameras and the servers.
So you have a turn. Thank you, Derek. We do some cultural council, designated in two thousand eight, designated the council of ours, the council. So we have established, and we, we probably did that to make ourselves more eligible. If we want to. Your attention, we are. We, we just told. So I'll just give a few other things. And if it's, we would like to just showcase what how the status of you and has for the, the for civilized facility in trying to find creative ways to help with the luxury needs of the city. Leave that, there's one statement that's impactful, being able to obey the city to, to savings. And appreciate the time that there's a put in with our all this funding to support the city. And some of the widgets they have for the app are, we've, we've been able to decrease the banking fees that they paid. And historically in the past, we've paid too much money for bank fees and having places that help reduce those costs. We also had positive generic fee budget for the first time in history that of Harrisville, we're actively building developers for the fees that they impose on the city for those developments. The things like we have tonight by adopting safety plan, continues grant patients. We are also offset the costs for inspections on subdivisions by doing instead of paying for jumps and such. Yes, we found these that collecting spores of sulfur, I think, believe every time we're now collect those. And we're also working through, the city manager with Jack, who can ask our city manager. Mitigation gear personally, also nutrition's all along these lines. I'd just like to reference on it, that Jeff was put into the Weber County disaster situation. They don't want to read about it, it's a federal, let me that he wants to. And he's got to stop today on submissions, I'm seeing, wanting to just submit. So we're just trying to, to bring to your attention all the things that we, but in last year to bring the city out where it can be moving forward and showcasing that. We have a little bit of an accident to your benefit, because this is a long meeting. So we're doing a, another next Tuesday to amend this budget so that we met the state deadline for help. Now, the same then. Other. We need to make some adjustments to some of these other few things. So we are having another meeting next Tuesday, the twentieth at seven Eastern. How we need a, we start for, to all, so that we can do those and we'll have more discussion. And the last thing I have notes is the land use training. I sent out an email that Pleasant U. City is seeing like this training. Something for council members, but it does do a lot to the land use side of things. And it is being presented by Craig Paul, who gets a kill forty, that's three, six, thirty, eight, thirty on June twenty-seventh. Pleasant U. City, so please just send me a email to be there. I got this one of the loved ones, our C P, and we should have sent that, so we'll just give it. Thank you. Council phone.
We've been in your picture, Bill, successfully, and actually eighteen people. We had a few more last. For dinner and to build some, few of us, some great. He's a chef. More than that, he took several lists. Major. And seniors, with senior citizens as far as scams and major things about. And so each one of them, a lot of questions. It was a very positive atmosphere to everything we talked about. You know, protecting our senior citizens. We help us, and this is something we'll continue to do. This is that we're helping, this is something that we need to about to connect with, and some of these, our, our city council. Give them out, nostalgia, memory, way through to the end of the year. And we'll make sure they're always good. We're gonna need a Dutch onion chicken, this. So, yeah. And you want to count yourself, come over. Oh, that should be that. Would have been a little bit of a, I think it's successful. We're just needs to get out, to, to the sound. It's known things that continue, Sydney, several others, you weren't behind scenes. And Justin, Paul, Kyle, the two, yeah, you're running along, if you needed it. That goes on my life, I appreciate it. And, you know, there was, there was a lot of experience, so we'll continue to be, you know, put some games together. But I think the bottom line is we're trying to network the senior citizens seriously. So we're looking to have a richer, I think that we're very resourceless. That's, that's my news.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you on your way, putting so much effort. Uh, Councilor Wise?
No, nothing.
Just the kudos to Robert, why not I went today? And to a lot of them, it was, so thank you, it was, the movie, yeah.
Oh. This is good. There's not many times that you want to drink cheers and taters.
That's all I have.
I think it's a man.
No.
Thanks to everybody. Thanks for all you do.
Because I think everyone's covered, so I appreciate all the. Share your questions, your interest in. Everyone to the city, we have great staff.
I wish I knew you.
I'm favorite.
Hi.
Next week.